This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right. Good evening. Today is Wednesday, March 26, 2024. This is the zoning board of appeals with City of East Hampton. Uh, we have public speak. First, is there anyone here who's looking to speak concerning an event or, or situation that is not on our agenda for this evening?
Okay.
Twenty-five, by the way. I'm just reading what's in front of me.
Twenty fifteen last week.
Oh.
Math man.
All right, um, CBA minutes?
Uh, no minutes, three minutes.
All right. And our first hearing, it appears that the applicant is not here, Nancy Soros Pearson.
Uh, no, I'd recommend just tabling this till, uh, the other two applications.
All right. So with that in mind, we will move on to Brian Riley seeking a special person, uh, special permit pursuant of chapter 11.12 and chapter 12.0. 12.7 of the zoning ordinance, applicant is seeking approval to construct a porch within the setback area in line with the pre-existing non-conforming single-family home. The property is located in the R10 zoning district at AT9 Avenue, map one twenty-two lot one two zero. You are here.
Shall I go to the microphone?
Uh, yeah, that makes it a little easier. So in case there's anybody online, they want to hear it or, and then you're also picked up when the video call goes out onto.
Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, my name's Brian Riley. My wife and I moved to our house on 18 Night Ave about a year and a half ago. Uh, really enjoying East Hampton. And, uh, after living with the house for about a year, we started thinking about how a screen porch in the backyard would be nice. And so that's our proposal. It was, uh, our, our builder, uh, gave us the pictures, which you've probably seen there. It would be stick 12 feet off the back of the house and be 11 feet wide. So fairly modest size, uh, but it would, it would suit us very well. Um, uh, I didn't expect to see any of my neighbors here. The only one who really would even see it routinely would be, uh, neighbors at 16 Night Ave. And we talked to the owner there, told him what we were thinking of, and he said, yeah, that sounds good to me. So, uh, so no opposition.
Um, so the, the encroachment is on the side yard setback?
Correct. We see there the house, um, is about six feet off of the property line.
Okay.
Porch is just continuing along that.
Yeah.
It's not going into the rear yard setback.
Okay, that was my, that was my question.
Oh, yeah.
It was going to approach into the rear yard setback.
It's just the, the white fence there is basically on the property line. And so the, and the corner of my house is six feet off. And we just want to follow the same line as the house. That's why we're in the side setback.
Okay.
Um, so, any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from members of the board?
I'm just curious. I, I Google it and look down from street view. This probably has nothing to do with your plan porch, but is that the garage that's on the other side of the property? It looks like it's like right, but it doesn't really relate. I'm just kind of curious.
Yes, our, um, yeah, we have a, it would be just off to the left of that picture. Yeah, we have a garage there. And then there, our next door neighbor at 20 Night has a garage right next to each other.
It's close.
There it's probably six, seven feet. They are pretty close.
And this doesn't seem to change anything.
All right. All right. So any further questions, concerns from members of the board, questions they'd like to ask? Is there anyone here in the public that has any questions or concerns related to the applicant before us?
If I could just say, um, this is a great example of, of very easy decision, at least for me personally, um, about a non-conforming property in an area with a lot of non-conforming properties. Uh, our zoning laws are not conducive to permitting the things that they were intended to permit, in my opinion. And there's some zoning recommendations before the ordinance committee. And I highly recommend to anyone listening to this at any point in the future and to anyone here today, um, that you, uh, mention this to your city councilors, especially the ones on ordinance committee, uh, and encourage them to change the ordinance so that smaller setbacks are just something that's there so that you can not have to come to things like this.
Sure you noted.
Something more important than the other stuff.
So with that, we will kind of get a motion to close the public hearing. So will. Second. Abode. So moved.
You may sit down, sir.
Okay. Um, so at this point, the findings are that the existing structure was built in 1957. It's located approximately six feet from the side yard setback where a 10 yard setback is currently required. The proposed porch would continue along that single, along that line and could create no, not intensify the non-conformity or create new non-conformity. And the proposed porch is, will not result in the structure being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is also existing within the neighborhood. Uh, by way of special permit approval, the applicant, uh, complies with the provisions the ordinance of the City of East Hampton. The porch will not be detrimental or offensive. The porch addition will not impact any wetlands, watershed, aquifers, or well areas. The porch will conform with all relative provisions of zoning ordinance. The property is connected to city water and sewers, so there should not be any, uh, additional, uh, undue strain on that system. No open space or agricultural land are affected by this project. The proposed porch will not result in pollution of surface or ground water, nor cause erosion or flooding. The porch will not constitute a nuisance by reason of air or water pollution, excessive noise, or visual impacts, and any findings not listed are here. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the application of Brian Riley of 18th Avenue?
I'll move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Uh, so congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, we, this decision will be written up shortly, at which point it will be sent to the city clerk. There will be a 20-day appeal period where it be posted. And after that point, you will be notified and you can go to the Hampshire County Regent of Deeds and submit the approval, the decision of this board, and then you may receive the settlement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.
You're welcome.
No, if you'd like, you can return. If you so choose.
Okay, we'll go back to the first one then. All right, Nancy Sorensen Pearson. Assuming that has, that is, uh, who we are looking to open a continued hearing started on February 26, 2025. There's another area you have here.
Uh, you could, you could tell I'm still using an older template.
All right, yeah. Not 2015. Uh, which is an appeal of building inspector decision pursuant of Mass General Law 4A dash 15. The applicant, uh, owns and operates a short-term rental home for which the building commissioner has issued a cease and desist order on the grounds that it is not permitted under a use table, uh, five dash one of the zoning ordinance. The property is located in R10 zoning district at 14 Night Ave, map one fifty-six lot 50. Um, and now it has come to our decision or, or understanding that the City of East Hampton is going to work on a ordinance to address the short-term rentals within the city. And at which point, as, so as of now, uh, the zoning board of appeals proposes to continue the matter of 14 Tenth Avenue appeal, appeal until October 22, 2025. This proclamation will allow the city time to develop and adopt short-term rental ordinance while preserving the applicant's right to appeal. Okay. In the meantime, is it, my, my understanding is that there will be no enforcement of said non-conformance?
Correct.
Okay.
That is our understanding. Um, and what we would also need from the applicant is in addition to them agreeing to that date in particular for the continuance, they have to agree to, it can be the same date or it can be a later date, um, to grant us that extension of rather than a hundred day period to make a decision to some date either October 22nd or later, saying that window is extended until that time.
Correct. So basically, you can continue doing what you're doing.
Okay, um, I'll introduce myself with the, my name's Laura Fisher. I'm the attorney for Nancy Pearson. Um, I was before you all last. Um, and yes, I've, I've had occasion to speak with attorney Tanner. Um, it's my understanding that, um, I mean, we're agreeable to continuing this. As for the date certain and the continuance date, I'm fine with having both of those be aligned. Um, and what I'd also say is just that we, you know, while the ordinance has, the ordinance efforts are pending, uh, my clients will be plugged in there, um, and, uh, but will preserve the appeal, um, and keep it pending until October.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Do you need me to sign anything?
Yes.
We also need to agree on what that, uh, deadline is for a date. Um, we were thinking it makes the most sense to do October 31st. That way, for some reason, October 22nd, there was some quorum issue. It doesn't end up just being, um, a constructive, uh, grant.
Okay.
Because we couldn't make it and then we passed the deadline. Um, so I just recommend.
Okay. Does that make sense for you on your part? Basically, we will, we will be planning to reconvene. Our, our scheduled meeting is the 22nd.
Okay.
But we are going to state that the, your continuance will expire as of the 31st.
The deadline.
The deadline, because in case we cannot have a quorum for the 22nd, we can have a meeting then on the 29th, 29th.
Any day before.
Or any day there before the 31st.
Yeah, that's, that's agreeable for us.
Okay. All right. And feel this one?
I want to fill in, uh, the date of October 31st.
So.
Twenty-five, yeah.
And that's on this note or on the?
That one there. You should have two copies of the one in your hand.
Yes, but there's, oh, big. Action two. Ten, three, one, 2025.
The second copy for the applicant.
Three, one, 2025. So you just need to come sign these?
All right, can I come up there?
And you get one and I get? All right. Maybe I'm under that account.
All right, we good?
Yeah. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Last thing is, needs to make a motion to continue the public meeting as the hearing portion of action.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to continue the application of Nancy Soros Pearson, appeal of the building inspector to a date no later than October 31st.
If you do it to a date certain. Do a date certain, so you would, you would set it to October 22nd. So I moved.
Second, second. All in favor? Thank you. Moving right along. Good. Not ruin the moment. Okay. So our next applicant is Tim Hopkins, seeking a special permit pursuant of table five dash one to use number five and 12.7 of the zoning ordinance. Applicant is seeking a approval to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family. The property is located in the R5 zoning district at 6 Oakdale Place, map one thirty-five lot 158.
All that's accurate.
All of that is accurate. Okay.
So all I'm looking, we, we purchased the property last year. I'm just looking to put a few walls back up, bring it back to the two family that it was. The previous owner knocked some walls out. They were living in it as a single family. Um, I'm not changing the egress. I'm not changing building size. Simply putting a wall back up in a kitchen space, in a hallway space, and stairwell space.
Okay. I think you had.
I said, and this, and I put there some sketchup drawings, said, I don't know, it's older for this because I didn't, I had no architect or design drawing. So what you see is what's existing and what's going to be there in the end.
Okay. I trust that you're going to do it. That's, that's the building department's job to enforce that. Okay. Um, is there any concern, any questions from members of the board? Fields.
Was there, do you have to do anything to make one kitchen into two kitchens again?
Uh, so the way they did it, they had two kitchen spaces. They kind of moved into one and used the other as maybe a dining room or something. So I'm, I'm adding another, the, the rough-in was still there in the basement, so I'm just putting new sink counters in. And the rough plumbing for a bathroom on that side is also in place. I kind of got to get it back up to speed, but, um, a, all the rooms are there, so still be the two kitchens in the end.
Are you, does it currently only have one, uh, line in from, uh, for power?
Yes, it does only have one. So, so actually it has two in right now because I had the electrician start before I realized that was a problem. Um, so it does actually have two meters now, which one's not hooked up.
Okay, but it, so it'll, it'll have suffered electric.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. How it was originally built.
Just a quick question, if that's all right, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, do you know when they converted it to a single-family home?
We tried to find that in backlog permits. It doesn't seem to show up, so I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I don't even think, I don't even think it was permitted. I think they just did it.
To, to be honest with you, it, the work looks like it wasn't permitted. I would expect that to be the case. They just knocked some walls up.
Not occupied now?
It's currently unoccupied.
All right.
And there's, there's no changes to the exterior, um,
No.
whatsoever, not even like the façades?
Nope. I might power wash it.
On that note, behind the current, like, front door with the porch area, does it have two doors?
It does. It has two doors, two staircases. The back has two doors. Everything is.
Two-family?
It's literally a two-family with being lived with.
Absolutely. Cool.
Two basement entrances.
Okay.
Wow.
Yeah.
They did the least amount of work to make it a single-family house.
Yeah.
So there you go. So.
One side has plenty of room. I lived in, I was, I was a neighbor of this house.
Oh, really?
Pretty recently, yeah. And I never thought, oh, yes, we should definitely knock down that wall and get 10 bedrooms instead of like five over the three stories. Yes, brilliant.
All right, so, uh, is there anyone in the public or is anything they would like to add, comment, concerns? Anybody on the outer webs there? Okay, um, a motion to close public hearing.
I make the motion to close public hearing.
Okay, second. So moved. Uh, any further discussion on the board? Well, someone like to make a motion?
I make the motion to approve the special permit pursuant of table five one, uh, use five at chapter 12.7 of zoning ordinance. To seek for approval to convert a single-family dwelling back into a two-family dwelling. Property located in the R5 zoning district at 6 Oakdale Place, map one thirty-five lot 15, 158.
Okay. Um, creating the criteria.
We go a lot.
Um, you don't have to. They're all written out there. They're all written out there. It's all pretty straightforward. Um, I guess the only question that, that does come up is, is there adequate off-street parking to serve a two-family dwelling?
So there's a driveway on the right-hand side of the building and there's going to be a driveway on the left-hand side, the exact same mirror image of what's there.
Okay. That, that's, that kind of covers that. You already addressed the water. And there's no open space or anything that will be affected, I guess. You're not going to do anything beyond the footprint of the existing structure. So, any other questions? Okay. Motion's closed. Okay.
Second.
All right.
Other, second, perfect.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess it's my turn.
And now, I mean, we've gone through three hearings in 20 minutes. Don't, don't ruin the dive here. When did this decision post? Uh, we'll probably, I don't know how soon you'll have that written.
I, I've got it pre-written basically, so everything was pretty straightforward, so I can expect that if not tomorrow, then Monday.
Perfect.
That'll be pointing one day appeal period.
Hey, guys, have a good night.
Awesome, thank you much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an administrative, uh, agenda item where we put out a request for proposal for the THCC sound level test as required by condition one of the special permit granted on January 22nd, 2025. And we will review proposal of the third-party consultants to conduct this required sound test. Now, we only received one, uh, bid. Is that correct?
Is it one?
Yep.
Not two?
It was one.
It was one. That was my understanding, that it was just one. So I guess the question is, has anyone had a chance to read over the proposal? Okay. Is there any questions that the board may have concerning this?
Dylan.
I thought there was two. It's a different name that I saw on the.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We've got cross-spectrum acoustics and we've got ASIN.
Hmm, maybe I'm mistaken here.
Um, you sent both of them to us somehow, though, so.
Yeah, because my understanding is that we had sent out, uh, we sent out one of them, uh, and then in conversations with the applicant, uh, they had wanted to clarify what that scope of services were, so then we got back another one, but yeah, I guess you're right. I am just noticing that.
Okay. You're off the hook. Dylan is causing the delay. He will be flogged.
Did I send you the first one? The, the original package, right?
You sent that one, yeah, on, uh, you sent that at 5:00 PM, two days. Subject line ZBA, March 26th. Files CSAP 2025 1280 equal to 12.
And cross-spectrum acoustic path of the line. Yeah, because the other one was, I don't.
Let me just cut, caught up on all my emails to make a door. I'm making a change review criteria. All right, so I believe the one here, this is the one that we are putting forward to the board.
Okay, not the other one.
Not the other one.
Okay.
Too bad, I read the other one.
Yeah, so did I. A little bit, a little bit later.
All right.
So.
I see applicant have a chance for each.
Have you folks got a chance to do this one as well?
Uh, we have, uh, only received the one proposal from the centec. Uh, I'm learning about the existence of the second proposal now.
Think the one that you have is the one that actually is relevant.
Yeah, this is, this is the relevant one. This is the one that was, uh, talked about with, um, Tom and Allison having back and forths about this one. Um, so yes, it is the one that's being discussed. This is the one that you're familiar with, so I guess it's just a question of this, this one is amenable to the applicant and amenable to the board.
Okay. Well, yeah, unfortunately, I mean, we are relying that they are going to do what was in the RFP. And provided the RFP was written to the expectation that is needed, which is to the state standard. And I guess it's a question of whether you are amenable to the potential incurred cost, estimated expenses of $2,250.
I have here, which might just be worth reading for the board, um, and so it's the tasks, what they're, they're setting out to achieve here, which are the attend the kickoff meeting with the City of East Hampton to confirm the installation locations for the noise monitors, prepare measurement and analysis protocol, establish consensus on data gathering and noise criteria evaluation. Install up to six noise monitors at the site, uh, for at least four nights to survey existing ambient noise levels closer to the property lines of the proposed music venue in accordance with the, um, measurement and analysis protocol of the map. Uh, issue a brief report with collected sound levels at the survey locations. Then visit the site to measure noise levels attributable to concert sound in accordance with the map. We expect this measurement will take no more than one evening. Will require the legal participation of the concert venue and their sound reinforcements, uh, staff. And then prepare a written report of results of all the testing, summarizing our opinions as to whether the measured concert noise levels achieve the provisions of Mass DEP Division of Air Quality and Control Policy 90 dash 001. Meet with you online one time to review the findings of the report. Um, and then if initial, uh, if initial testing indicates that mass DEP provisions have not been achieved, repeat tasks two and three after the applicant has instituted additional sound mitigation measures. Uh, includes one meeting per visit. So that's laid out how they're planning on, um, meeting that state standard that.
Okay, and, and I guess my question is, there's a fee. We propose to provide the services described above on a time and material basis with a not-to-exceed amount shown below for each task, not including expenses. So this is, it's an estimated $10,000 plus expenses of $2,250. So
Yeah.
It's a, it's a 12,200, estimated $12,250 expense to produce, to perform this test. And should the applicant not pass and it have to be retested, it would be approximately another $3,650 per test.
Yeah, it's up to that. And they do say time and materials basis. So it is possible that they won't reach their not-to-exceed amount. But usually consultants aim for their not-to-exceed amount, so.
Can I ask a, just a, a point of order clerical question? So they're going to take noise levels on the sample um, nights. What is the percentage that the results from a concert date cannot be above? Do, are they saying they can't be any louder than normal?
Uh, it's only so much above ambient. I can pull up that, uh, 90 dash 001.
Thinking of other things that are, you know, really, really loud that are, we're all exposed to, you know, the jets going overhead from the, um, nearby airbase. I hope they take into consideration.
Those are not state law compliant.
I know.
They don't have to be.
But I, but I mean, you know, we're going to hold these guys to a standard. Got to be a standard that's achievable.
Well, and that's why the state has to dictate the standard.
Oh, yeah, the sources, uh, source raises the noise level by 10 or more decibels above ambient noise or the sound raises its octave band noise level by three decibels or more above adjacent octave octave band levels. I think we were slightly different. This is just the AI version that pulled up here. Let me see if I can get the actual.
I mean, if, if they were to do the test, like, with the ambient, with the ambient being F40, whatever's going overhead, um, it would stand to reason that thanks to the logarithmic approach of decibels, it would be much less likely. I mean, any given noise the child are making would probably tick the meter less above whatever the ambient level is if it's the ambient level of a jet going.
Well, and I think that, you know, by setting out six sensors and collecting data for at least four nights, there, there should be, you know, I'm sure that it tracks not, it's not a, a peak. It's going to show throughout the course of time and, you know, because if an ambulance goes by or a fire truck, that could set the bar just based on a, on a blip rather than on a standard noise.
Yeah, I believe in the, uh, in the ordinance, there's something about, um, a kind of a, uh, a time gate of 90%. Um, uh, yeah, if, if there's things that are above the otherwise ambient level for a brief period, that might be rejected from the measurement by the nature of the formula.
Yeah. So same thing with the F16s.
That's true, yeah.
They'll be long, long before.
It's less than, probably less than 10% of the time, so I guess they are compliant.
Um, so if we feel that this proposal meets the RFP. Um, so if we feel that this proposal meets the R F P, the ball is in your court, because you're the one incurring the expense.
Yeah, um, could I ask, um, more about the, the other report that, that we had, or the other proposal, I should say, that we haven't learned about until now, and, and is it less than twelve thousand dollars? Because that's a pretty significant expense.
I, I actually scrolled to the fee section of this report and for a second thought it was the same report, because the fees are not that different.
Okay.
Think, if I'm not mistaken, because the other one was something that, and I'm gonna go ahead, let me pull it up. Uh, just a moment.
Bearing in mind that it may be, it may be null, I suppose, if it was requested under different criteria.
Um, well, they already were responding to the R F P, so they wouldn't just haphazardly send out a a proposal.
I can't find that. I just, I read it just the other day, too.
From the, two days ago at five P M.
Two days ago.
But it could be in the thread that.
This here is the other one I can.
Yeah.
Here, too.
I mean, I should email.
Was this Cross Spectrum Acoustics?
It's actually a little less expensive.
That page has completely disappeared from my. For what that's worth.
Which one?
Did you find the other one?
Yep, it should be, it was on the screen a moment ago. It's up there now, perfect. Um, that's the one here. One example stay. One stay, it might.
Recognize this? That's what I think is the.
Yes.
The same stipulation for nights. Yeah, that's what's up there.
That's what's up there, okay. Yeah, I mean, um, is actually, I mean, that's showing a lower net cost. Yeah, ten thousand.
Yeah, and is the, is, I, I see that task four is, if required, um, is task four the, is that the additional measurements? So on, only if needed? I, I just can't see enough of the, uh, of the proposal here. So if that's the case, it might be five thousand dollars cheaper than the other proposal.
Yeah.
Can you make that portion full, full screen, Dylan?
I'm trying. I'm going in between two different ones here. Hard to keep track of which one. What, here we go.
So. So there we go, there for scope of work. Determine existing sound level. Measure performance sound level. That's number two. Number three is create the report. If you scroll down some more. And number four is additional testing, which is exactly what you were
Yeah.
indicating there. So it's, it's, it's exactly as, I mean, it's, the report, the, the proposal is apples to apples, the dollar figures are not. So my question is, what, what was, what's been the indication or the, the, the thought process with the planning department to move forward with the proposal from Ascentech as, as opposed to from the Cross Spectrum Acoustics?
Let me take you look here.
The end of this file, it includes some featured projects, and it came to my attention that one of them was the noise assessment done for Fort Hill Brewery.
So we used them before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See what they want to go with this one.
I have a hard copy of it that I could skim through to you.
So I didn't, uh, could print you one, it'll be just a few moments.
Yeah, and I, uh, I hate to make you stand and watch me read. But it's, uh, I've, given the, the large difference in dollar figures, I think it's worth making you stand and watch me read.
Good hourly, hourly rate.
Yeah.
Your line's pretty good.
Yeah, no, I can print this. As I'm looking through emails here, I think this one, uh, never made it to Allison and it just made it to me, and that's where it never got in that conversation where Allison was leading this, uh, the thought between you folks, and she just never saw this one. Distributed to you guys.
Yeah.
Got it, some people.
Yeah.
Who needed to see it. Uh. So. Yeah, if you give me. Yeah, if you want to take like a, uh, five-minute recess, I can.
Alright. Alright, so we will take a five-minute recess, just pause recording.
Yep.
Okay, we are back live. We are back live. So, at this point, Tim, you've had a chance to review both proposals?
Mm-hmm.
And is there one that you find you're more in favor of than the other?
Um, yeah, I think the, uh, uh, respect the credentials of both, uh, Cross Spectrum Acoustics and Ascentech, um, but the, uh, the Cross Spectrum Acoustics proposal has, uh, much more reasonable costs, uh, so I think that would be the proposal we would encourage the, uh, zoning board to select.
So, I guess the, the only concern I have i- is that the cross Cross Spectrum, Cross Spectrum Acoustics proposal has not been reviewed by, uh, Allison. But you have reviewed them both?
Yes, I've reviewed them both, um.
And they both met the criteria of the R F P?
Yes, they both state that they, um, commit the, and they both specify that they're meeting the standard of the ninety dash zero zero one.
Okay.
Um, and both appear to be qualified, um, vendors to perform the service. I think the only difference I had noticed just going through, uh, I think one's saying they're doing it from five points as, and the other one, uh, the Acentech said they were gonna do it from six points, but the standard only requires it be done from two points, the property line and the nearest, uh, residence.
Okay. Is it up for us to make a de- decision as to which one?
Yep.
We don't have discussion, I can make a proposal. Well, you know, is there anyone else in the Netherlands that would like to speak? No? Alright, so at this point, we'll close the public hearing. Since it's even a hearing, it's kind of a, it's, because it's an administrative thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and discussion on the board.
Is there a question about, again, that the Acentech says up to six noise monitors at the site, and Dylan, you're saying the standard is one at the nearest residence, so.
And one at the property line.
We, how do we ensure that one of them is doing?
Because they, they stated they're gonna comply with specifically that ninety dash zero zero one.
Okay.
And they intend to do that with multiple monitoring sites, uh, and then that's just by very nature of complying with that standard, one of those will have to be at property line, one will have to be at the nearest residence.
At the nearest residence, is it still the public right away, though? Like, we don't need any?
The, the resident would have to agree. Do it. Um, but that's something I imagine a, a resident would be willing to, and, you know, if you're saying they were unwilling to allow for testing at that house, it, you really don't have too much of a case to say, well, it's, it's too loud, it's above the noise ordinance. It's like, well, you, you, you refuse to allow us to, to make that demonstration, so.
Okay.
I do notice that, um, in the more expensive one, just call it that, Acentech, um, they have a meeting at the beginning to like work with the city and figure out what the plan is, like a whole kickoff meeting thing, and I think that excluded from the C S A one. I don't necessarily know that we need a kickoff meeting, especially as you just described, Dylan, when it's like so trying to drive what information they're supposed to be collecting, and they're saying, you should go to work, that's what they're gonna do. Just to note a different side.
Alright, so with that in mind, would anyone like to make a motion?
I will. I make a motion that we approve Cross Spectrum Acoustics to conduct the sound level test for the heavy metal these consortium.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And, and the expenses will, as, as part of the original decision, expenses will be covered by H C C.
Hmm.
Or whatever you're.
Yes, H C C, yes.
Too many initials.
Um, so just to clarify on that, um, will you need the, uh, total for, um, the task one through three, or also for task four, which we're not sure if we're gonna need to do yet?
Alright, would be my understanding that the, the amount of, of the initial test will be put in escrow? Do we need to do a contingency?
I mean, I would recommend the, that full amount, because whatever isn't utilized, um, the applicant.
Okay, so, plus one additional test. So it would be the full amount.
Okay.
Um, should a second test be needed? A sec, uh, a additional contingency deposit will, will need to be put in escrow. So you're always, you're always gonna, you're always gonna be one step ahead on payments, but you'll get it all back plus interest.
Okay.
I need to remake the motion. Does that?
Yep.
That mean, exactly.
It's protecting the city.
That's how I, how I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, same time, if we didn't, if we didn't ask for the thirty-one hundred for an additional test, and then an additional test was needed, we just wouldn't conduct the test until they put the money in the escrow, and then if they didn't put the money in the escrow, then the whole thing would just stop and they'd never get their permit, right?
Yeah, task, task four is, is ad nee, is, as, as needed, yeah.
But like, we wouldn't, we, we, we wouldn't. Doesn't, I feel like the, the intent of the scope of work is that they're not going to, to incur expenses against task four until it's determined that we need them to. And in that case, Dylan, would it be the case that we would just have them hold off on actually doing any of that work? I mean, this doesn't, does this include a billing schedule?
It just does.
Okay, so I, I feel like without information about, or an agreement between the city and the vendor for how often the billing will occur and when the billing will occur, will they, will they ask for, for all that money upfront?
Uh, it says, it says net thirty in.
Oh, it says net thirty, and that's probably, uh, and I take it that they're doing this, yes, they have it listed as hourly with expenses. Um, so I would assume they will bill for actual hours worked at the end of the month.
Yeah. Yep.
So in that case, I, I feel like we can leave off charging the thirty-one hundred to sit in escrow in the event that we need it. That's my opinion.
Okay, well, and this, this is where is why we have these discussions.
Yep.
Because. Okay.
So I, I, I always advocate a little bit on the, uh, the safe side with these things. Again, the money does come back to the consultant. It can just avoid friction down the line, um, the money runs out. Now you might have a case where you're saying the, you know, not to say you folks, but it happens where the applicant says, no, 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 we, we, we met the standards, we don't need more testing. And then the city's saying, well, we don't think you did. The money isn't in the account, and now you've, you've gotten yourself into a little bit of a pickle where they don't agree, they don't want to put up the money. You're trying to move forward, now we're issuing cease and desist orders, and that's, it's, not that I expect that to happen here, but that's usually the, the thinking around. Something like that, and then, you know, do we want to kind of keep a standard that we apply to everybody, or do we just kind of?
Is that, is that the, is that the standard the state, the city uses?
That's the standard that I've seen, um, on other projects such as Tasty Top.
And we stick to the standard.
And we stick to the standard.
Okay.
And is there a a return schedule of the escrow funds following the meeting of the regulation?
So once they've confirmed, yes, I don't know what that looks like. I haven't done this portion, uh, before, that's something I'll be working with Allison on, but.
I would imagine that would probably be net thirty as well.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that, you know, your funds, any additional funds, ex, in, any funds in excess not used for the test would be returned within. I'm gonna say forty-five days, just because I don't know what the regulation is, but more than likely it's thirty, but.
Understood.
Does that, does that make?
Yeah, I mean, we'd, we'd love to, uh, to not have as much of an upfront burden, um, but, uh, but I understand, so if that's, uh, if that's what we need to do, I guess that's what we need to do.
Okay. So, then the, do you want to re, re, re-improve or resubmit your motion?
Resubmit. I submit that we assign Cross Spectrum Acoustics to perform the sound level test for T H C C um, as required by condition one of the special permit granted January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and that the, the full amount of the.
And, and that the fu, and then full amounts for same will be put in escrow prior to the start of the testing.
Okay.
Do you need me to say for ten thousand three hundred and eighty dollars?
There we go.
Okay. Still moved.
Alright. Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hey.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Well, thank you for being this through.
Yes, thank you to your team.
Absolutely. Alright, um, our next meeting is scheduled for April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Hopefully everyone has it on their docket.
Got it. More stuff coming to us, it never stops.
Stuff coming.
So.
Okay.
People always talk a big game about bringing something to the planning board, and it never materializes, and then everybody has a vague idea of something they want to do, like, I'll apply for Z B A, why not? So.
Okay.
Get ready.
Alright.
We're the place to be.
A place to be. Alright, so, motion adjourned?
Still moved.
Alright, any seconds, any objections?
I'm the second man.
Still moved.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.